Good afternoon, everybody. If you would please take your seat and if you have an audible device, turn it off or silent so it doesn't interrupt the proceedings of the meeting. I'd like to welcome you to the Paulding County Planning Commission meeting for the month of March 2022. Start shopping for Christmas already. Before we begin, we have some items that have been administratively forwarded. I'll cover a couple of things and then I'll turn that over to Chris to announce those. This is, again, Paulding County Planning Commission for the Board of Commissioners. Every application that's on here, with the exception of this number six item, will be forwarded to the Board of Commissioners for their consideration at tonight's meeting, correct? 7:00 PM. So if you're an applicant or have applicant, you must be there for it to be considered. If you have questions or an interest in it, you should be there also. Paulding County Planning Commission is a recommending body regarding property use and zoning for the Paulding County Board of Commissioners. They also serve that function, again, for the city of Hiram, which is what the last agenda item covers. Each side, the applicant will be given 15 minutes to present their application. All questions, comments need to come from them to the chair. You can use all of that 15 minutes or reserve some for rebuttal. Also, anybody wishing to speak on behalf of the application may utilize some of that time. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to an application, you have 15 minutes correspondingly. That is cumulative time. Anybody speaking is utilizing the 15 minutes. Please be mindful of anybody behind you wishing to speak. Again, all comments will be coming to the chair. Questions from the Planning Commission or the Board of Commissioners do not count against anyone's time. At this time, I would ask the Planning Commission if you have had an opportunity to review the minutes from the previous session of this body. Any questions or concerns? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Have a motion to approve, Mr. Aston? Is that to approve? Okay. Have a motion to approve by Mr. Aston. I have a second from Mr. Henson. All in favor. Motion passes 6-0 and 1. And before we get started with the regular agenda items, Mr. Robinson, would you announce the changes?
Yes, and thank you. There's several applications being forwarded to the April Planning Commission meeting. The first one is 2201Z, Richard Butler. That one has still got some technicalities regarding some of the estate. The second one is 20202206Z, application by Ashley Overton. It's a resoning application from R2 to A1. And that one has been forwarded for additional staff review. And then, application 202207Z, application by Samuel Kelly-Gall. It's also a resoning from R2 to A1, and that one is also being continued reviewed by staff.
Thank you very much. So at this time, if you will introduce the first application, prior to that, I advise my fellows here on the Planning Commission, please turn your mic on if you're going to be asking questions so that everybody can hear you. Pass the mic to the staff or to the Board of Commissioners also if there's any questions from those groups. Mr. Robinson?
Okay. Application is 202203Z, application by Adam Baker, Boyd Austin, requesting to rezone approximately 29 acres from R2 suburban residential to R55 active adult residential for a proposed development of, at that time, 110 single-family dwelling units. Property is located in Land Lot 253, District 2, Section 3. Property is on addresses 174 at Old Hiram Road, in Commission Post 1. Staff has recommended approval with 15 printed stipulations. The applicant is present. And we have, some of the neighbors have had some concerns and input on this, but no noted opposition.
The applicant's present. Please come around, state your name, sign in, and address your comments to the chair.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, and members of the Planning Commission, Board of Commissioners, and staff. I'm Boyd Austin, representing Key Partners Consulting, along with applicant Adam Baker of S.A. Land Group. We also have Jonathan Presley. I'm gonna let Adam keep his seat. He had to have ACL surgery, so if we need him, we can get him up here. But otherwise, it's tough for him to stand. As you've heard, we are requesting to rezone two parcels totaling just over 29 acres. The zoning is R55, active adult from the R2. And the, some of the Sellers family, the Crane Estate, are here today. And we believe this is the highest and best use of the property, and we reserve constitutional rights for the use of that property. As you heard Chris say in the beginning, it started out at a higher number. We are down to and limited to 88 active adult fee simple homes. These are non-rentals. It has an overall density of about 3.1 units per acre, well under the county maximum of four. It will include amenities, including the, at least a 2,000-square-foot community center, and it conforms to the R55 street scape plans and increased landscaping plans. We have met on at least three occasions with either Commissioner Dunn, planning staff, department directors, or senior staff with the county to work through these stipulations. And we are in agreement with those. I will note that number 13 is an accommodation on the property line with Ms. Monty Rainwater, that those lots, 1 through 3, will have a 2-foot-high berm and a 6-foot fence, per her request, and additional evergreen plantings. That has been an area of utility easement, and kind of has open sight lines, so we're gonna do our best to cover that up. And the buffer will be planted as well on the development side of the property. Fisher Homes is the builder, and in your packet, you have examples of their product elevations and a typical street scape. These are the same homes that have been approved previously in Paulding County and are being constructed on another site in the county at present. We would ask for your consideration and your approval of this application.
Thank you very much. Initial question is usually, you've listed some of the stipulations, but I'm assuming that all in totality are acceptable to the owner?
Yes, we worked through those with staff last week and have signed off on all printed stipulations.
At this time, I'm gonna open it to the Planning Commission to ask questions of the applicant.
The estimated square foot of each one of these buildings, is there a low and a high, or is everything the same?
There are variations. You can see by those plans, there are different floor plans available. Some of them will have a loft option, but they vary in size. They conform to the zoning requirements and the elevations architectural requirements of the county.
What's the square footage?
I don't know what the average is. Probably 18 to 2300 square feet.
What do you think the cost of per square foot's gonna be on these? You got an estimate on that?
Estimate on the unit's gonna be about $375 and up.
Okay. So $375 will be the low?
Projected, yeah. Who knows if we continue with inflation we have now?
But it won't be any less then.
No.
Okay.
Are there any other questions from the Planning Commission?
I've got an architectural question. This typical patio collection, that's what Fisher's building, is there anybody with Fisher can answer a question for me?
Jonathan may be able to answer.
Okay. Just looking at one of the street sapes. Doesn't appear to be any soffits or eve overhangs on the side. I can't tell from looking at the plans, the floor plans, because you can only see front elevation on the side. But somewhere, I thought we had eve requirements, and Mr. Robinson might be able to answer that. But this is one particular section doesn't show any eve overhang or any soffits on those sides of the houses.
What page do you owe, Dave?
Come on, they're typical.
Well, now, keep in mind, that is an existing one that they have built somewhere else. That may not be the exact eaves.
Okay.
Yep.
But...
Yeah, we'll...
It come up here.
The county requires additional.
Yes, sir. We'll do whatever's required by the county for the architectural elevations.
Okay, so on the side eaves, we can assume and ask for 12-inch, your typical 12-inch eve overhang all the way around? Okay.
Those will be requirements.
Those pictures that you have are the actual pictures of an existing Fisher development.
And those requirements are in the development regulations, correct, Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
It's actually in the zoning ordinance under the, when they submitted, it was under the old R55 district, as opposed to when it was just adopted this month. And it does require traditional design with brickstone or hard siding, in which, one thing we want to note, we will continue to work with and meet with the developer and builder regarding their elevations.
Mr. Steele, anything more?
I have a question. 196 Old Hiram Road, have y'all come to an agreement with that property owner? I know you're considering his easement to be part of your development right now.
The easement is shown, and we have, he is present today. We have met with county staff, and there are three options under that stipulation, to either bring the buffer down inside the easement, to begin the buffer at the southern border of the driveway. If a agreement can be reached, that they understand that that buffer can never be interfered by them. Or a third option is to have an entrance through the development. And all three of those are under consideration as part of that stipulation, and that will be approved before construction is begun. That's the...
What if the agreement can't be reached? What option do you have? What option are you gonna take?
I mean, he has the easement on the property. He has an easement on this property.
On his property, yes.
It's not his property. He has an easement across the development property. So it will either be beginning at the edge of the easement, the edge of the pavement, or within the subdivision, the access.
I want to have...
I have a question. Ms. Robinson, you had mentioned that something about this being submitted under the old R55. Did I hear wrong?
This application was originally submitted, actually, it was submitted in December. It was before there was a moratorium on accepting these applications. That's why it's actually been brought for you today. It's been submitted prior to, so it was under the old, it was already submitted prior to October, March 8th, when the new unified...
With the new R55, so, in other words, they can, the new R55 requires two-car garages, correct?
This, they do have to have two-car garages.
So this has to have the two-car garage as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Good question.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant?
Mr. Austin, inside of these homes, are they, I guess, handicap accessible?
They are built to standards. They, maybe, if you want to address it, I don't want to overstep what I may say or promise.
Could I get you to go ahead, since you've been up a couple of times, to sign in, state your name for the record, please?
Yes, sir. State your name.
Jonathan Presley. So in the R55 ordinance, they speak to thresholds, door widths, everything else, I think, that you're asking about. So we are required to adhere to that ordinance within the R55. So it speaks to all of that, and we have to abide by that.
So you don't make your homes into things special?
We think they're special. We think they're nice. But we, there's, they speak to, you know, wider doors, I don't know the wording, the thresholds. So it is, it's...
There's a difference between handicap accessible and ADA standards on cabinets. So if somebody wanted to buy one, I'm sure they could meet ADA standards with their lower cabinet heights and things like that. But under the general rules, it just has to be accessible, mainly dealing with door widths and movement.
Okay.
Mr. Aston?
Well, the structures, what's the typical width of the proposed homes? And how far apart do you think the, they will be apart from each other? Also, typical setback from the road?
So they range from 38 feet wide to, I believe, 44 feet wide. The setback is a 15-foot front setback, and the sides are 8-foot side setbacks.
So if you calculated how far or the distance would be between each home, I, no, I've got a career in civil work, and I always think about that drainage in between the structures, getting the proper drainage. Of course, let's see, we got a little topo map here. I have a magnifying glass to read it. But what is the topography out there?
So we've, we're still working through that, but we'll set our pad grades at roughly 2 and 1/2 feet above curb on the high side, which will elevate the pad high enough to get the water to the road and to the curb and gutter and to the storm drain.
What about, what about between the structures, getting the, y'all put any drains or anything in between the structures?
No, sir. There's usually a swell on the property line, and by getting the pad elevation up high enough above the curb, it allows the water to flow through that swell and out to the property.
So you do have enough room to put a swell in, then?
Yes, sir. We do. Yes, sir.
I have a question for Mr. Jones, DOT. What kind of measures are they gonna have to do to get the traffic out into 92? I was over, over there the other day, and I sat there 2 and 1/2 minutes trying to turn right to get out of there, and turn left wasn't happening.
Yeah, good afternoon. Again, access on the 92, that road, as you know, is planned to be widened at some future point in time. I believe the current timeframe is 2025, but again, that obviously can change. They actually have on the future widening plan shown as a two-way stop control, which means obviously Highway 92 has free-flow movement. The side streets old Hiram and the opposite side have stop control. So again, they're gonna have to find the acceptable gap to turn right and turn left out of that subdivision.
So it's gonna be a right-in, right-out, or?
No, no, it's actually a full access. They're gonna have left turn lane on 92 going in, which it has one currently. There's gonna be a right turn lane, again, as current, shown currently, going in. So it's, it's gonna be full movement. But again, you're gonna have to basically find an acceptable gap to be able to turn in and then turn out.
Again, I think I missed that. You're speaking to the future development of 92.
Yes, even though currently it has current, has turn lanes, and it will in the future also.
Between the garage and the sidewalk, is there enough space to put a vehicle in it without backing into the walkways?
There's 15 feet setback from the back of the sidewalk.
Are there any other questions from the Planning Commission to the applicant? Board of Commissioners, any questions? Mr. Stover?
As far as bedrooms, are they mostly 2-, 3-, 4-bedroom houses? What's y'all's layout?
Mostly 2s and 3s. There's, there's an option for a loft area that usually has a bedroom and a bathroom. Some people, if they use a third bedroom, I have a friend that lives in one in Kennesaw, and it's an office, but it would be technically a bedroom. So it's depending on which floor plan they select and what options they go with.
Mr. Carmichael?
Been chastised for not using this. I understand there's been some excellent conversations between Mr. Baker and Mr. Austin and, and the staff and some of our commissioners, like the ones sitting right to my right. Have you all discussed with Ms. Rainwater about some sewer connectivity?
We have, we have been made aware of the request. At this point in construction, the sewer easement has been purchased, correct, under contract. So all of that hasn't been drawn. They're more than willing to continue the discussions, but they're not that far along in the development process. And we've told them that, you know, whatever it works out, we'll be glad to deal with them.
Any other questions from the Board of Commissioners?
That would be a plan review?
That would be a plan review. And then, Paulding Water and Sewer, and Mr. Coates can correct me if I'm wrong, but that will be the consideration at that time as far as determining accessibility to sewer and treatment capacity and all of that, right?
Does the development regs for the water sewer, doesn't it address connectivity adjacent properties? Okay, so there is ordinance for it, so...
Mr. Robinson?
Just to, just to clarify or add to, under the R55 district, it requires all dwellings to be step-free, easy access to the dwelling unit. Easy passage feature, requiring clear passage doorways 32-inch wide for easy passage to all living spaces throughout the dwelling. And it's an easy step, free access to bedroom, bathroom, kitchen, and gathering area on the main floor.
And I do not see Mr. Hofstadter from the Paulding County School Board here. Was there any comments submitted by him for this purpose, for this hearing?
We have not had any comments from the school system.
Any other questions from the Board of Commissioners to the applicant or the Planning Commission to the applicant?
I do have one more question, Mr. Robinson. I wanted to just clarify with regards to this R55 zoning. This is the current zoning, correct? This was not the previous zoning that went away a while back.
I would term this one the second R55 district. The very first one went away in 19...
It was amended.
Yeah, it was amended.
So is this the most recent one?
The most recent one was adopted March 8th. This one was, this application submitted prior to that adoption, so they have a right to follow the...
So with the smaller setbacks and having the right to the one-car garage, correct?
No, that's, they, in this district, they had to have two-car garage, and it has to be amended.
I know at one point, it was no two-car, you know, I got this two-car thing hanging up.
Yeah, we never, we never did the single car.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is the version from August 23rd.
Yeah, this is, so it has the two-car garage in there, and it also requires a 15-foot setback on the front to at least a garage.
Okay, and then since then, our current R55 zoning requires larger setbacks, correct? And different, I think, Brian, I think...
They're very similar. It did require different buffer areas.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Austin. You may take your seat. You got some minutes remaining. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on behalf of this application? Hearing none. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition or may have questions, comments, or concerns regarding this application? You please come to the lectern, sign in, state your name, and address your comments to the chair.
Hi, I'm Craig Rainwater, and I just wanted to ask, Mr. Steele had a question about the overhangs and the roof lines on these homes. In one of the discussions that we had with the developers, they said that all of these would have no gables on the backside of the property, and all the roof lines would slope to the rear. So basically, trying to ensure my mother's privacy as best possible, with the fence there, basically, she's just seeing a roof. She's not, you know, if they're sloped to the back, no gables in the rear and no glass rear-facing on the second story. Is that what my understanding?
Ask me, and I will come back. Ask me, and I'll come back.
I apologize.
That's all right.
Ask, ask the chair.
I will find out for you.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anyone else that may have questions, comments, or wishes to speak in opposition? Hearing none. Mr. Austin?
The statement made was correct, that the loft options face towards the street, dormers or whatever for those. So there's no dormer that faces on the back, and that wouldn't have anything to do with the eve width on the dwelling.
So we can guarantee the privacy that they're seeking?
I would say that it is mitigated. I'm not gonna guarantee that somebody can't see somebody from somewhere, but we've done all that has been asked.
Is there any other questions to the applicant at this time, based on input?
How many are you expecting to be two-story?
I don't know. It's a, a lot of them will be pre-sales, and it'll be based on what they ask for and want. It's a mix, several different floor plans, so I don't know how to gauge.
What they submitted, their typical patio collection, the street scape, and all their floor plans, I don't see a two-story.
If you saw it, it wouldn't be a two-story. It'd be like a gabled dormer coming out with a loft room above it.
Right, maybe, yeah, more of a master and main store.
Not a true two-story structure.
No, it's just a loft in the attic.
Because I don't see many 55 and up that really want a two-story house.
If you look on this coastal classic elevation, on the, like, this is the second page, you'll look over to the left and see a dormer. That would be that bedroom window for that upstairs room or office or whatever it is.
And it's typically over the garages.
Over the garage, one of those, yeah, okay.
So you typically don't have on the back of the house.
I do have a friend that lives in one, that, retired teacher, and she bought it with that extra room that they can, when the grandchildren come to visit, she can turn them loose up there, and she doesn't have to deal with their mess. So that's probably what it would be for guest or storage.
Are there any other questions to the applicant?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Robinson?
Just to note, a full two-story unit would require an elevator.
That's notable.
Isn't that used to them?
It would for me, anyway.
I was gonna say, that's more appealing now that we're getting older.
Thank you for that input, Mr. Robinson. At least it wasn't a dumbwaiter. Thank you, Mr. Austin. At this time, I will consider a motion on application 2022-03-Z.
I got this question. I'd like to, I'd like to make the motion to approve adding a stipulation number 16, and that be that all dwellings have a minimum 12-inch overhang.
Well, there's already 16 stipulations, right?
No, there's only 15 listed.
15.
Oh, sorry.
So adding number 16.
16. Again, say that again for me, please. Sorry.
Builder to require a 12-inch minimum eve on all four sides of the dwelling.
Since that's an added stipulation, I would like to redirect the question to Mr. Austin or his compatriot there. Is that an acceptable consideration on our part?
That is.
Thank you. So we have a motion from Mr. Steele for approval of application 2022-03-Z for the 15 listed stipulations, adding a 16th to read. Builder required to add 12-foot eaves on all four sides of the structure. Say that again?
12-inch.
Did I say 12-foot?
That's a long overhang.
12 inches is good, 12 feet are better, right? Okay, go ahead. So it's 12 inches. My bad.
I second that. I second the motion with the 15 stated stipulations and the added 16 regarding the 12-inch minimum eve on all four sides.
You had to repeat that, didn't you?
I did.
I have a second from Ms. Seaver. All in favor? Motion passes 6-0 and 1. And again, this will be forwarded to tonight's meeting of the Board of Commissioners at 7 o'clock. Applicant must be present for it to be considered. Anyone who has an interest should be present also.
Who made the motion?
Mr. Steele.
Okay. The next item, last item, is the zoning ordinance text amendment. The Paulding County Planning Commission, and it will be the city of Hiram, is to consider a text amendment to the zoning ordinance of the city of Hiram, Georgia, 2003, as amended. The amendment is in regards to Article 8, Section D, R4, multifamily, non-fee simple rental residential district; Section G, R7, multifamily, fee simple, non-rental residential district; and Section H, PRD, planned residential development.
As... after having discussion with our attorney for both the Planning Commission, Paulding County Board of Commissioners, and city of Hiram, we want to have this stated as what the intent of the city of Hiram is. We will bring it back before the Planning Commission for a more full discussion or a public hearing, but I will take public comment. The idea here from the city of Hiram is basically following suit with Paulding County Board of Commissioners' adoption of the UDO. In preparation for that, we will remove the R4 zoning category along with the R7 and the PRD, and look to a future of adopting the zoning ordinance, the Unified Development Ordinance, from Paulding County. So at this time, I will open it for any public input for this particular meeting. We will come back for another public hearing, and then the legal public hearing will be forwarded to the city of Hiram. So the floor is open. Hearing none. I will now close the public hearing for this text amendment consideration. I do have a couple of announcements, or at least one announcement to make. Paulding County Department of Transportation and pretty much with the city of Dallas and city of Hiram are doing a study on US 278, Georgia 6, as it runs through Paulding County from the Cobb County line to the Polk County line, or at least to Dallas, right? So they are holding a meeting tonight from 5:00 to 7:00 here at this location. Would welcome anybody who wishes to have input on that to come by and take a look at all the maps and everything else that they may have available. And Erica, you can speak to it if you would like to, Ms. Parrish, if you want to give more information.
So yeah, this is a State Route 6, US 278 corridor study. 278 is probably the most important roadway in the county, and there is multiple issues along that corridor. We hear from our citizens, maybe not daily, but weekly, and would love feedback from citizens, business owners, anyone that travels in Paulding County on things that are good, bad, need to be fixed, or considered along 278 from the Cobb line to State Route 120 by Cannon Highway.
Thank you very much, Ms. Parrish. And at this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Henson. Do you have a second?
We don't have a second.
By Mr. Leggett. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, you have a question, Mr. Sturrock?
Ask him.
I don't think we need a motion on that, do we, since we're coming back on the last? Yeah, maybe I messed up. Okay, we're good. I knew I didn't miss a... All right. So I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor? Motion passes 6-0 and 1.